We move on next to Article 16. And I call on Andrew Rose to make the motion.
I move in terms of the article except to strike the word "reduced" in the last line to read, "Provide rate stability and possible consumer cost savings through bulk purchasing."
Motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
So you do the clicking? What? Yes, I gave it to you Monday.
Sixteen. Was it on a thumb drive? Is there anything you can give them now?
Um, I could, yeah.
Oh, they found it? Yay.
Thank you.
Okay, you have five minutes.
Okay. Hi, thank you. I am Andrew Rose. I am in Mothers Out Front and Climate Action Now and a town meeting member from Precinct Four. We are, the goal of this 100% renewable energy resolution is to move us as quickly as possible to 100% local clean energy. There's two main parts to this. One is asking, thank you, for the town to put climate on the table whenever making any decision that will affect our ongoing long-term energy use. That obviously includes things that last a long time, like buildings, which is one reason why the zero-energy building article is being brought with this. To get to 100% renewable, we need to do two things. We have to increase the renewable energy resources, but not up to the level of energy use that we currently have. We can't squeeze out fossil fuels that way. We have to reduce our energy use significantly. Just to give you an example, with the zero-energy building, you have about equal amounts of costs in addition to building to code for the renewable resources and the reduction of energy use through very efficient envelope and very efficient HVAC and other systems. So to get to, in 30 years, as close as we can to 100% renewable, we have to have a plan, which we don't have right now. And a group of residents of Amherst, Pelham, and North Hampton have been talking about how we might propose to our communities how to do this. So when we vote on this resolution today, we will be influencing our neighbors directly. And we believe after North Hampton and Pelham pass similar resolutions, many other communities will as well. And so we have a big impact here right now. So there are many communities that have already committed to 100% renewable across the country. Five in Massachusetts so far and 40 or more cities and towns across the country. Many of those dots in California have been using a method that our group has been studying and find very appealing because it allows for communities to control their own energy resources. And that is something else that this resolution asks the town leaders to consider, working with our neighboring communities to develop a plan that uses a law that we have here in Massachusetts, not many states have, for community choice aggregation, also called community choice energy, and we refer to it as CCE. So CCE starts with the purchase of bulk energy, electricity for all residents, businesses, and the municipal uses. Many communities hope for rate reduction. Our hope is that we will be able to green the grid through this method from the start by choosing where we purchase our energy from. But as soon as possible, it does take time to develop the resources to do this, but as soon as we have enough of a revenue stream, which you have because you're purchasing and selling the energy for the community through this entity, it's a public entity that intermunicipal entity that will allow us to build up the energy efficiency and the renewable energy in our communities. So it's a self-funding entity. And we hope that we will be able to work collectively because that adds scale. It would be very difficult to do that just in our own community. But over time, we can build more and more local energy resources and own our own resources. Thank you.
Thank you. I call on Mr. Steinberg from the Select Board.
Article 16.
Try it now.
So the Select Board voted unanimously to recommend Article 16. We take great pride in our community in Amherst for the work that we've been doing. We've been recognized as a green community by the Commonwealth Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs since 2012. We've purchased electric vehicles and installed public charging stations in town parking lots. We're one of the few communities to have an electric school bus. We've been working since, starting in 2014, we started working on a Solarize Amherst project that was one of several communities in the Commonwealth to participate in such a campaign, which was to, a chance for residents and small businesses to install solar at a more affordable cost. It was a highly successful project. Whenever possible, we've tried to increase the efficiency of buildings. Our Recycling and Refuge Management Committee has been working on a zero-waste proposal, and the Select Board has endorsed that as a goal, and the committee is now working to achieve it. The committee itself, the Select Board and the town manager considering making into a sustainability committee to broaden its goals. The Select Board has made this a priority for the town manager. In our 2018 performance goals, we've indicated as one of the goals that we're looking for from our town manager, initiating and advocating for green efforts and programs, including progress on the installation of solar energy generating equipment on the landfill. So we view the goals of this resolution as being consistent with many things that we have strived to achieve and have achieved with great pride. The one thing that, of course, noted and that the previous speaker talked about was the community choice aggregation program. It's a goal of the resolution that we're going to strive to achieve that. We actually have worked on community aggregation, electricity programs before. I worked with Mr. Musanti and Mr. Poehler at various times, looking at various possibilities. It's a complex issue because you are making decisions for our community as far as purchase of electricity or giving them that opportunity. You want to make sure that cost is a factor that they're considering. So with those notes, the Select Board is recommending this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee has no positions, my understanding. This requires a majority for passage. It is a resolution, and it's open to discussion. And yes, right in the front row, white card.
William Kayzen, Precinct Three. Wasn't sure if this is a point of order or not. I just wanted to clarify. As a resolution, this means this is non-binding? Is that correct?
Yes, it's not changing the Amherst bylaw or anything like that. It's just a resolution and, yeah, what the town meeting wants to do about something, but it's not binding.
Okay. And then I'd also just like to point out that my hometown of Philadelphia has pledged to do this by 2035, a much bigger and more complex place than Amherst. So seems reasonable that we could do it by 2050. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, green card over there in the third row.
Molly Turner, Precinct One. I want to speak in support of this article. Syria announced at the United Nations Climate Talks that they would sign the Paris Agreement. This makes the United States the only country that has not signed the Paris Agreement. There are COP23 international climate talks going on in Germany right now, and there is a U.S. People's Delegation who are advocating to push back against the Trump agenda. Right now, the People's Delegation needs support from people back home, people like us, people at the local level. Amherst is a green community. It's recognized by the Massachusetts Department of Energy and Environment. And there are actually five criteria that we should meet to be designated as such. And one of them is to set requirements to minimize lifecycle costs for new construction. Buildings create emissions from their construction, their operation, and their demolition. Architecture 2030, a nonprofit organization established in response to the climate crisis by architect Edward Mazzaria in 2002, posted this message on its website, "Life During Trump. Progress on climate change will come from the bottom up." The U.S. and global architecture and planning community, along with our colleagues in the building sector, will continue to lead the effort to implement the objectives contained in the Paris Agreement towards an equitable, sustainable, resilient, and carbon-neutral-built environment. Here at the local level, we at Town Meeting can insist that we bring such progress to the building sector in this town and join those communities who are going to help the Paris Accord reach fruition.
Thank you. Are we ready to come to a vote? I see no hands, so let's vote. Again, this is a resolution. It requires a majority. All those in favor of the motion before you for Article 16, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. We now move on to Article 15. And I call on Mr. Riddle to make a motion.
Chris Riddle, Precinct Two. I move in terms of the motion on your motion sheet.
Motion's made and seconded, so the motion is on everybody's motion sheet, which you should have picked up at the back table.
I would like to ask Lee Jennings from our committee to participate. She's not a town meeting member.
You wish to have her speak to the motion?
I do. Help me with it. We're going to divide the job.
Okay. And is this, Lee Jennings, a registered voter in Amherst?
Are you a registered voter in Amherst?
Okay. And will the two of you share five minutes?
Well, I would like to ask for an additional three minutes, please.
An additional three for a total of eight?
Correct.
All those in favor of an additional three minutes for a total of eight, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. You've got it. Okay, who's going first? So why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Lee Jennings, and I feel fortunate to live in a town that has so overwhelmingly supported 100% renewable energy. Well, Article 15 goes beyond goals and requires a clear action. A grassroots roots group of volunteers has identified one important step Amherst should take, making sure that all new buildings and additions that the town builds are part of the solution for climate change and not contributing to the problem. There is an urgent need to reduce the use of fossil fuels, and there is a need now more than ever to take action at the local and state level. We are not doing enough to reduce greenhouse emissions, and it is time to act boldly and with urgency. There's so much to happen, there's so much that needs to happen that it can be overwhelming to know what to do. Let's begin with what we already know how to do and that we have the technology and knowledge to implement right now in 2017, that is constructing zero-energy buildings, also known as net-zero buildings. These are highly efficient buildings that produce as much renewable energy as they consume over the course of a year. The Kern Center in Amherst is a local example. Let's quickly move forward with something that has a big impact, tackling the CO2 emissions of our buildings. In Massachusetts, buildings and their energy use is responsible for 54% of our CO2 emissions. While zero-energy buildings are not common, their construction has really taken off. There was a 74% increase in zero-energy buildings in 2015 to 2016. It's critical to establish a zero-energy goal from the start of the project, which is what this bylaw will do. We have many knowledgeable people in the area who know how to build zero energy. We have a letter of support on the back table from over 15 local architects, builders, and officials who know that zero energy is feasible and state that this is how we should be building our buildings now. Zero energy works because much care is taken to reduce the amount of energy needed by the building. This lowered energy demand can then easily be covered by renewable energy. Look at the great range of styles that ZE buildings in New England can have. We aren't mandating an architectural style. All of these buildings achieve zero energy in different ways. We are mandating a level of building performance that has clear benefits for the occupants, the community, and future generations. How do we prioritize the many actions that need to happen around climate change? Let's start with the ones that are fiscally responsible. Chris Riddle of our group, who is also a retired architect, will address the strong financial case for zero energy.
How much does zero energy cost? I've produced a spreadsheet projection on experience based on the experience I've had with the Hitchcock Center, a zero-energy building completed recently, for which I was the owner's project manager. There's a premium for zero energy. Based on the Hitchcock Center, I've used 10%. I understand that Amherst College uses 8%, but I think 10% is a good, fairly conservative figure. Extra money spent for energy efficiency and renewables isn't like extra money spent for more space or better finishes. It produces a return, the value of the energy costs saved. An expense with a return is what's known as an investment. Amherst would borrow the money to pay for that premium, but most of the payments on that loan are balanced by energy cost savings. Here are two graphs from my projections, which you have in your pocket. The top graph is the zero-energy version of a generic building. The bottom one is the ordinary code-compliant version of that same generic building. The orange bars are energy expense. The blue bars are debt service to fund the 10% premium for zero energy. You can see that the orange bars for the ZE building are far smaller than for the ordinary building. That's the energy savings from zero energy, and that is what funds most of the loan payments. The total payments for energy and bond payments over the 20-year life of the bond add up to more than the total energy payments alone for the ordinary building. But then, when the loan is retired, there's a huge bonus that lasts the life of the building. Next slide. Next slide, please. This slide merges these two graphs showing the net difference between the ordinary building and the zero-energy building each year. You can see that the difference zeroes out after 16 years. Next slide, please. Here are zero-energy buildings in cold climates that have been completed recently. One police station, two fire stations, and one utility building, similar to a DPW. These show that ZE buildings are being built right now for some of the kinds of projects being contemplated here in Amherst. Can a DPW or a fire station be zero energy? Well, here are two zero-energy fire stations, so it clearly can be done for fire stations. We don't have a DPW to show, but I believe that there is nothing inherent in either building type that makes zero energy unfeasible. Much of both buildings are conventional, offices, staff quarters, conference spaces. The unusual features are equipment bays, which do present an unusual load when the bay doors are open. But the temperatures required for equipment bays are lower in winter and higher in summer than for occupied spaces. And both types have large roof areas for solar collection. All of these demands will be entered into an energy model, which will be the basis of design for the buildings. The designer and the engineer will adjust the design until the energy model is satisfied and the budget is achieved. It's more or less the standard way efficient buildings are designed and engineered everywhere these days. Next slide, please. To review, then, passage of our bylaw will mean that all new buildings and additions over $1 million built by and for the town will generate annually as much energy as they consume. And it will mean that there will be no fossil fuels used for these buildings. The bylaw affects only new buildings and additions, not renovations. We've been listening to many and have made amendments to the version in the warrant article, such as, "We allow fossil fuel-powered emergency generators. We allow renewable systems to be located off-site if the project site is unfeasible. We remove the Jones Library from the listing of subsidiary agencies." This is because the Jones Library Building is not owned by the town, and the funding for the expansion project will be funded by the trustees largely through an MBLC grant. We clarified that ground-source heat pumps, sometimes called geothermal, are allowed as part of HVAC systems and are encouraged. Next slide. So I ask, if not now, when? Thank you for your attention. I will be grateful for your vote in favor of Article 15.
Thank you. Mr. Steinberg for the Select Board.
I have a question procedurally first. As you know, the Select Board wishes to make a motion. Should I make that now?
Yes, you should.
Okay, thank you. I move to refer Article 15 to the Select Board.
Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Okay. And so, since I have five minutes, I won't ask for additional time. Select Board could not support the article as it was presented, but, and that is why we've taken a very unusual step. I can never recall a Select Board moving to refer to itself, but it's an example of our real commitment to the underlying goal that we're talking about here, that we've made this suggestion to you tonight and making this request to you tonight. The Select Board supports zero energy as a goal, and we think that we probably can achieve it with many of our buildings in the future. But we do have two very particular concerns about the two buildings that have been mentioned, the DPW facility and the fire station. And by putting this into a bylaw, it is different than putting it into a resolution, because it does have the force of law to it and has the potential for some very deep consequences for this community that we urge you to consider very carefully. The efforts can and should be made to get to that goal, of course, but the petitioners cited just a moment ago, no DPW facility that has met this particular goal, and they cited two fire stations that we have, I've looked at a little bit myself, and we can't be sure that they're comparable. One of them is definitely not comparable by size. They don't have comparable uses. They aren't serving the same kind of community, and they aren't necessarily, and this we don't know, located on the same type of land. And the land that you build something on is very much a contributor to achieving this goal. When you talk about the Kern Center and Hitchcock Center, those are built on sort of flat plains at the Hampshire College site, which are very different from some of the other sites that we may have to consider for these facilities that have to meet a variety of goals. The consequence of not meeting a zero-energy goal, if you set it into a bylaw, is you can't build the building. And what is going to happen, if this is to pass this evening, is that the town manager, whose responsibility is to enforce all of the bylaws and uphold all of the bylaws, would have to have certification in advance from the architects and engineers that a building will achieve the goal, may achieve the goal, is not sufficient. If he doesn't get certification that it will achieve the goal, then he can't approve the construction of the building. Well, what happens then? Then we're stuck with the existing fire station or DPW facility or both. And both of them are extremely cost-ineffective, inefficient, dangerous buildings that are going to be far worse for the environment and are currently far worse for the environment than a building, a building that will be substantially towards the goal but not entirely there. So these are things that need to be worked out through the process. By referring it back to the Select Board for further consideration, there is absolutely no harm that is going to be done to this process, but it will give us an opportunity to continue to work with the community in a very open manner to try and craft a provision that we can bring back to the town meeting in the, at the April annual town meeting that we think will be able to achieve the goal without the risk that I have just discussed. So a couple of additional things that I think that is important to note. There's been some concern expressed, well, if you'd bring it, if it's done-- There's been some concern expressed, well, if you'd bring it, if it's done as a motion to refer and the Select Board can't work something out to the satisfaction of all parties, are the petitioners stuck? Well, the petitioners are not stuck, because they can always come back to another town meeting just with 10 signatures. Is there a danger that any building will be built in the time that is going to intervene between now and April? Absolutely not, because we're not going to proceed with either the fire station or the DPW facility, because the committee that's working on those projects doesn't even have sites to build it on yet, so they haven't asked you for the funds to do so. And the last thing that was mentioned was a concern that if the charter were to pass, is there a provision in the charter that would make it impossible for a future town meeting to act on this? We've checked with town council, and town council has assured us that, no, that is not a factor that we need to consider further, that we, that it can come back before the town meeting. So, for all of these reasons, we strongly urge that you give us an opportunity to work with the petitioners and work with this community, work with the DPW Fire Station Committee and others, and to get this done right, and nothing is going to be harmed or risked by doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Schreiber for the Planning Board. Somewhere... There we go. I'm looking for Mr. Schreiber.
I'm speaking for him.
Okay.
Jack Jemcik with the Planning Board. The Planning Board recommends approval of the motion to refer. The Planning Board discussed Article 15 at two public meetings, October 18th and November 1st, and voted on November 1st to support the motion to refer. In general, the Planning Board supports the concept of net zero energy, but believes that the mechanism to achieve it needs further study.
I now call on Lynn Greisman for the DPW Fire Station Advisory Committee. You can, either way, it's okay.
The DPW Fire Station Advisory Committee voted on October 27th not to support Article 15. We then also voted on November 6th to support the motion that the Article 15 be referred to the Select Board. As Chair of the DPW Fire Station Advisory Committee, I want to personally thank this group, the Zero Net Energy Committee, for bringing this to the town's attention. It has certainly created a lot of discussion, and I think very, very purposeful and important discussion. Our committee has been meeting for about 15 months, with members of the committee who have been working to build a new Fire Station Committee for over 11 years. Members of the Zero Energy Committee have regularly attended our meetings, made a formal presentation, and engaged with us in significant dialogue. While the DPW Fire Station Advisory Committee is very seriously committed to the goal of Article 15, we have concerns, serious concerns, about the technical and financial feasibility of reaching the goal of zero energy in buildings, in building both a new DPW building and a new fire EMS, both of which are critical to our town's public safety. I'm not going to repeat what Sleckman Steinberg has already said. Finally, and of critical importance, is replacing the new DPW and central fire station, both of which presently contribute to our present, to our carbon footprint at an amazing rate. So, we would like to meet both the goals of public safety and getting as close to zero energy as we can, but we urge you to refer this to the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neal for the Finance Committee.
Hello? Yep, Tim Neal for the Finance Committee. Our original recommendation was to make no recommendation, and that was made because we just didn't feel there was enough definitive financial information either way to make that determination. We subsequently, once we learned about the possibility of referring to the Select Board, on Monday, last Monday, the 6th of November, we met again, and in this case, voted unanimously with one individual absent to recommend that this be referred to the Select Board as proposed.
Thank you. Motion before us is a motion to refer to the Select Board, which requires a majority for passage, if that... I hear a point of order. Wait for the microphone, please, and identify yourself.
Hilda Greenbaum, Precinct 1. Would it be in order to convert this motion for a general bylaw to a resolution and rather than referral to sort of give the intent that town meeting thinks this is very important? And I think that would carry more weight than a referral. So, would that be in order?
No, it would not be in order. Sorry. The warrant, the warrant specifically is for a bylaw, and you can't make that significant change on the floor of town meeting. So, let me explain the voting process first. So, the motion before us is a motion to refer to the Select Board, which requires a majority vote. If, when we come to a vote that passes, we've disposed of Article 15. If that fails, then the motion before us would be the main motion, which also requires a majority vote. If that passes, it passes; if it fails, it fails. We are now open to general discussion. Yeah, second row right there.
My name is Lydia Vernon-Jones. I'm from Precinct 5, and I am a member of the working group of the Zero Energy for Amherst Public Buildings Bylaw Committee, and I would like to speak initially here for our group. We are delighted that our Select Board wants to work with us on helping Amherst make a dramatic response to climate change and be a responsible participant in the broad movement to reverse climate change. We accept. We look forward to working with them to develop a strategic plan for our town around climate change and exploring many policies and practices that would reduce the carbon footprint of our town, which our sustainability plan has not been updated since 2005. At the same time, having met with them and having discussed this, we see no reason to wait before adopting the Zero Energy for Amherst Public Buildings bylaw. We've consulted with lawyers; we've consulted with town boards; we've been researching this for many months. We need it now. Now is the time to do it. Let's pass this article tonight before any more building plans are made. Let's follow the directive of the U.S. government, the government of Massachusetts, the U.S. Army, in making ZE buildings a priority. We look forward to working with the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to quickly point out two procedural things. One is Vernon-Jones correctly held up a red card because she was speaking against the motion to refer, so gold star for that. And it also is okay to, when you're speaking, even though the motion on the floor is the one to refer, it's okay to also speak about the article itself. It's too blurry to try and separate those two.
Where is order?
I hear a point of order.
What would the moderator, Jim Oldham, Precinct 5, what would the moderator like those of us who were unable to get cards of many colors to do when the time comes?
Good question, and there's a two-part answer. And the first part is directed to everybody, and if you brought a card home and didn't bring it back, shame on you. And try in the future to always remember, if you bring your cards home, to bring them back. For now, all I can say is borrow a card from a neighbor, and that's really the best we can do. Okay, we are proceeding with the discussion at this point in time. Yeah, I see somebody at the back of the aisle there with a white card.
Lawrence Quigley, Precinct 1.
Wait, I didn't quite hear that.
Lawrence Quigley, Precinct 1. I'm not sure how to refer to the man who has made the motion, but I wonder if he would respond to this. I've heard a reason, that there is no reason to do it from that committee. I'm wondering if there is a reason not to refer. If you would address that, please.
So, first, keep in mind that you should address me, and if he wants to raise his hand, you can. You can't request somebody else actually speak. Having said that, Mr. Riddle, would you like to respond to that? Careful.
We, several reasons why we are recommending, why we would prefer to pass this article this evening and then continue to work with the Select Board on implementation or perhaps modification of the article presented to, to be presented to the Springtown Town Meeting. First is that we don't, we are anxious that we would not have the option of making, assuming what happens in March, whatever, if the wrong thing, as far as I'm concerned, happens in March, then there is wording in the Charter Commission article, the Charter Commission Charter, that suggests that only minimal changes can be made, that sounded to me like housekeeping changes can be made in the, at the Springtown Meeting. So, we are, we were scared about that, and we thought it'd be a good idea to get this thing on the books and then continue to work on it with the Select Board. Also, and we think that there is, we have a fear that perhaps what would be produced by the Select Board might be an array of policies in favor of zero energy, subject to and subject to, as opposed to a directive, a requirement. And there is something particularly effective about a requirement that we would, that we think is an important message to forward to those boards and committees who are working on new buildings that are going to happen sooner rather than later. And where nothing is going to be built soon, there may be selection of the design team that might happen soon. And the selection of the design team is crucial to this. You can't just, for instance, engage the services of somebody who is an expert in public works buildings without, and not have somebody who, and not include people who are experts in zero net energy and conservation. So, between the anxiety about the Charter Commission wording and the desire to get something on the books now while we, when we can, and when it can influence the behavior of those people, those boards and committees considering new buildings, I think those are the reasons, maybe others of my committee might want to add to that, for why we recommend against the motion to refer.
Thank you. Mr. Steinberg.
I just have a piece of information. One is that in order to have a design team, town meeting needs to vote funds to allow for the hiring of a design team, so that isn't going to happen earlier than the next time that there's a town meeting. And, you know, it depends upon if we're able to get this land problem solved, as to whether it would be in April or not. The second is that I made reference to the fact that town council has given an opinion. Basically, what it is, is that the charter says the town meeting will not do anything if the charter passes, will frustrate the purposes of the charter. And the town council's point is a couple. One is that this is not the kind of an action that they would view as frustrating the purpose. But the second question is, there was an example in the, that was in the charter provision itself. Did create some confusion, so that, and basically, it is a matter that would have to be determined by the Select Board. Well, the Select Board has obviously already thought about this subject very closely in making that, in making the motion that we've made tonight. And for those reasons, we feel comfortable on both of the points that have been raised.
Thank you. Green card, not two, three seats in from the aisle there.
Rebecca Demling, Precinct 7. I very much want to support this bylaw, but unfortunately, I'm concerned about unknown implications from its implementation. I would very much love to vote on it in April, and I'm hearing that we're able to do that. I want Amherst to be a green community, but I want to do it correctly and not try to fix things after the fact. We have an opportunity to have model legislation for our state, but it should be thoughtful and deliberate, not rush through because we're afraid of a vote that may or may not pass in March. Thank you.
And all the way in the back row with the green card.
Bob Biagi, Precinct 2. I was listening to all this, the negatives about compliance, but if you read what's in here for compliance, it says addition that is not compliant after 12 months. Continue to work towards compliance every year until it is compliant and shall report the results publicly and to the town manager. That doesn't sound like a very difficult thing. I mean, if you can, can go out and try to do this sort of a thing and it doesn't work, well, this says, you just keep trying. You come to the town manager, you just keep trying. And I can't see where all of these negatives come up. Thank you.
Way over there with the red and white card.
Bori Ann Adams, Precinct 10. I couldn't figure out whether this was a question or an objection to referral. The discussion about referral has been concerned about the fire station and the DPW, but there are many other buildings that are going to be going up in the near future, various multi-use buildings. We don't quite know what's going to be going with the schools. And so, I guess I have a question, but also an objection, depending on the answer, whether the Select Board referral would deal only with the DPW and the fire station, or whether you were going to be coming up with some negotiated policy with the Zero Energy Group that dealt with all the new buildings that'll be going up in the foreseeable future.
Mr. Steinberg.
The answer is that the bylaw affects all buildings. The reason that DPW and Fire Station have been discussed is that because of the timing that we're talking about, those are the first two that are going to be going, and they also are two of the more unusual buildings. It's much easier to do an office-type building, these are, but these are unique facilities because equipment goes in and out, doors are continually being opened and closed, and that makes these very different and unique kinds of facilities.
Thank you. Yeah, the red card, three from the back row on the aisle there.
Jacqueline Idana, Precinct 5. I'm voting against the referral. I was at the Select Board meeting, and I watched it on TV, just to make sure that I wasn't wrong, but at no point did any of the Select Board members say anything positive about this article. So, I think referring it back to them, I'm really glad that they're willing to reconsider it. However, I don't think that it's going to be very productive to vote it back to them. I would, definitely want to vote for this article, not for the...
Thank you. Ms. Kruger, she was first.
Maybe we were at different meetings, but my recollection of our discussion of Article 15 was that we shared the goals of that article, but we had a different idea about the means, and we were very concerned about a bylaw mandating zero net at this point, because of the technology, some cost, and we didn't feel like we could put the town in that kind of a stricture, but we very much wanted to work... But we very much wanted to work on advancing the goals and took that upon ourselves by thinking up referring back to the Select Board, where we would take a lead in making sure that rigorous standards were adopted that would affect all future town buildings. We're not exactly sure the shape, and we wouldn't do it alone, but we were positive about sharing the goals of the Zero Net Energy bylaw. And to that end, we would ask you to please refer it back. We're very serious about this.
Green card way over against the aisle there.
Ms. Catherine Oppey, Precinct 9. So I want to support something that a previous speaker said, which... A couple of things, actually, that this is clearly a goal that everybody, certainly everybody who's spoken tonight on this article, supports. We all support the idea of zero energy buildings. What I hear the Select Board asking for, however, is for us to also consider and work together to make sure that this goal doesn't result in potential negative consequences to the town... To the larger town. So... And they named several consequences that could possibly be a result of something becoming a bylaw before we've had a chance for these groups to really sit down, work together, the fire building and DPW Advisory Committee, the Select Board, the Net Zero Advisory Committee. And I don't really see what the risk is by allowing these groups, these bodies, to work together to come up with something that we can all support. There've been so many articles that have come before this body that have been divisive and difficult, and here is something where we really all share the same goal, and the Select Board is simply asking that we refer back so that we can make it something that everyone can support wholeheartedly, as we did in the last article. And through their deliberations, they've considered some things that passing it tonight as a bylaw could result in negative consequences. So I'm not sure. And it's clear now that we can vote on this in April. It will come back to town meeting, so I'm just not sure what the risk is to refer it back. So I'm going to support referring it back to the Select Board.
Thank you. Yes, third row from the end with the red card. Yes.
Jerry Wise, Precinct 8. I am not going to support referral. I think it's a dangerous referral. I heard that there... From the Select Board, that there were serious consequences that could arise from this, but I only heard one mentioned, which was that building sites might be difficult to find, might be more difficult to find. And I want to remind people that the article allows for off-site energy production, so that... For that very reason. I didn't hear any other serious consequences for passing this. I do have a serious consequence for not passing it. Our earth is burning up, and we can keep kicking this can down the road and hope that we're going to come up with better ideas down the road. But while we're waiting down the road, the glaciers are melting, the icebergs are breaking off, the climate's heating up, we're seeing catastrophes multiply every year. If not now, when? And I'm not confident this will come back in the spring. It might. I think we've got to do it and stop waiting.
Mr. Slaughter.
What does that word say?
So...
Oh.
Good evening. So I'll provide another example of where I struggle with this bylaw as it currently At this point, is in front of us, and that is, there are some mechanical issues with the structure of that, and a perfect example of one is one that was mentioned earlier with regard to if it doesn't meet net zero, you just keep trying. So monitoring whether you're meeting net zero or not is not that difficult. It is part of the process when you go to build this type of a building. The difficulty is, is that you are then compelled to make it net zero, which means potentially, if the building is incapable of it, then you have to invest additionally in its capital to make it net zero. So if you were in a circumstance where you invest additionally to create additional capital in the building to try to achieve net zero, and you, again, still don't make net zero, then you're going to continue to invest capital money into that. And so at some point, that starts to get more expensive than is potentially comfortable for everyone and so... Or capable by the community for that. So I see that as a difficulty in the current structure of the bylaw as it is written now, that you could get into a circumstance, because we don't all have the... You know, there's not enough knowledge of the technology that's necessary for whatever building that might come before us, to know that there will be a technological solution. And so because we're in and required by a bylaw to then continue to pursue that, we would have to then to continue to invest capital monies in trying to achieve that. And we could get to a place where that cost is way too burdensome to the community. And so that's a concern I have, is there a place for understanding that mechanical piece of the bylaw better and to a place where it is functional for the community as a whole?
Yes, third row back with the red card there.
John Michaels, Precinct 10. I call the question.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to accept that motion. If you want to... No.[1305.02][1305.02](Coughs). This happened on Monday, and I spoke to the meeting about it, and if you want to make a motion, you need to use a white card. I'm trying to be fair and call on red cards and green cards and white cards, but if somebody uses a red card and then is speaking in favor of something, I'm going to stop you and vice versa, and I'm not going to accept a motion if you hold either a red or a green card. So you can try again with a white card, or somebody else can, but I'm not going to accept that motion. And we all should consider, is it time to come for a... Come to a vote sometime soon?[1341.15][1341.15](Laughter). Right here with the red card.
Chevyn, Precinct 7. No bylaw that we've developed, and I've been in town meeting a little more than 30 years, has always been perfect. Planning Board has come back with this amendment or that amendment. We have to start this act now. The time is running out for our children, our great... My great-grandchildren, whatever. I heard earlier this evening, I heard the Select Board say they were too busy to meet again with the town meeting committee that wanted the town meeting advisory committee because they had so much to do. Well, if the Select Board has so much to do, how much time are they going to have to devote to this? I know that some of the finest minds in this community have been working on this bylaw, and I think we have to pass it tonight.
Right there, four rows from the back with the white card.
Amanda Robertson, Precinct 5. Call the question. Thank you.
Motion for the previous... Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. If two-thirds of you vote in favor, we will come to an immediate vote on the motion to refer the article to the Select Board. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds.
Aye.
We need an electronic vote. Motion for the previous question. Hang in there. Pressure's on.
What I think is going to do, I think what's going to happen is they're going to... The motion to refer is not going to pass, and then the question will be opened again, and I think then the article will be approved.
Then I think we're...
Yes. But I think the motion to refer is not going to... And I'm voting naturally.
Voting window is open. If you don't see your vote, just press the button again.
People are confused what they're voting on.
Well, we'll discuss it at the end, but they really shouldn't be.[1558.52][1558.52](Laughter). Motion for the previous question has passed. 116 yes, 22 no, six abstentions. There was a point of order that people were confused. I feel that I declared the vote clearly, and on the screen it says Article 15, previous question. So if you're really confused about what we're voting on, you have to make a point of order before the voting window starts, but you should have... And I don't think you were confused, were you? So yeah, just make a point of order if you're confused. At any rate, the motion for the previous question passed. What's now before us is the motion to refer Article 15 to the Select Board, which requires a majority vote. And all those in favor of the motion to refer Article 15 to the Select Board, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it?
No.
We want electronic vote on that, too. And the window is open. The motion to refer to the Select Board has failed. The main motion is back before us. It is open to discussion, but I'm also hoping, unless you have something brand-new to say that no one's heard before, I'd really ask people to come to a vote fairly soon. Yeah, I see a white card right at the end of that row there.
Maria Kupicki, Precinct 8. I call the question.
Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. I'm accepting that. If it had been at the beginning of the entire debate, I wouldn't have accepted it, but I think it's perfectly appropriate for town meeting to decide now if they're done with the debate or not. So we are now going to have a motion... A vote on the motion for the previous question. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then immediately come to a vote on the main motion under Article 15. If two-thirds of you do not vote yes, then we will continue discussion. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We now come to a vote on the main motion under Article 15. Majority vote is required. Motion is in your motion sheet. All those in favor of the motion under Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's a majority, but we'll have an electronic vote. Article 15 has passed. We now are moving on.